Got everyone here. Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the second Zoom meeting for the City Council. April 21st, 2020. The clerk will call the roll and record the attendance.
Anthony Fercos?
Here.
Bartley? Greeney?
Here.
Hernandez?
Here.
Leahy? LeBron Martinez?
Lacy?
Here.
McGee?
Here.
McGivern?
Here.
Murphy?
Here.
Sullivan?
Here.
Coleman?
Here.
Bacon?
Here.
Uh, late, uh, Counsel Leahy just, uh, texted me. He's trying to get in now, so he'll be on shortly.
Dave Bartley is on the screen too, but, um, I don't, he didn't hear the.
He's muted. Ryan, can you show him?
Dave, can you hear me?
There it goes.
I can.
All right. All right. So with that, we'll get started. Um, we do have some guests on for tonight. We have, uh, Devin Sheehan, a school committee member of Devin Sheehan. Thank you for being here. Uh, the mayor is with us. Uh, his chief of staff, Mike Bloomberg, Whitney Anderson from the schools, and Doctors Reich, the superintendent, are here, uh, to let everyone know. Uh, also Sergeant Hart from the police department. With that, um, one thing with regards to public comment, because it's on here, for the next meeting, we have set up an email account so that people, constituents can email into that account. We'll, we'll put it up and it will flash across the Zoom screen uh, for the next meeting as well, but we'll have it ready for the next meeting. People can email that, uh, a question in or a comment, what they're looking to do on an issue, and either Ryan or myself will read that, uh, out to group. Uh, that's why we'll do a public comment. There are security concerns of opening up to have people just come in, as we discussed in the past. So this was, um, a discussion that Ryan, uh, Scott and Crystal and I had in order to get public comment in there in a way of doing it. For those who are having trouble at home with the link, we are reaching out to Scott to make sure that you can pull up the Zoom meeting on your computer if you can't watch it on channel 15. So with that, we'll go over to, uh, communications. Someone? Okay. Communications is from the clerk's office and the Ministry of Assistant. It's the minutes of the March 10th, 2020, and April 7th, 2020, City Council meeting.
Motion to receive and approve?
Motion is to receive and approve any discussion, any changes, any fixes? No? All right. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? And that was everyone voting yes. Uh, item two is from Tanya, our city auditor. It's the monthly budget report.
Motion to receive and send to finance?
Motion is to receive or refer to finance. Question? Anyone want a question? Nope. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? And that was unanimous as well. President's report, um, real quickly, uh, I know, uh, we just talked about the public comment. Once again, we'll have an email up there for next meeting to send in questions, and we'll read them out, uh, to everyone here. Um, once again, I like to thank Ryan, Scott, uh, Crystal for, for helping us out with this and making sure this thing is, is flowing, uh, as smoothly as possible. Also, as we'll keep saying, a special thank you to the nurses, doctors, police, fire, uh, the city of Hoyoka, everything that they're doing, our teachers. I know Doctors Reich is here and school committee member Sheehan, we thank you very much for all that you're doing. Um, it, it is a tough time, uh, and we just saw the report today that schools will be closed for the rest of, uh, the year. So that, uh, a little sad, uh, for all of us who were talking about it just before the start here that, uh, for, for the young kids, it's, you know, it's a different, different culture right now due to the environment. So to Hoyoke family members, to, uh, residents, we, we thank you for everything that you're doing. Uh, we'll get through this, but like I said, um, it's not just about the president's report. Is there any report from anyone, uh, here tonight? Not being the counselors. Uh, I see no hand yet, but who, who just said something? Uh, Counsel Grady, Counsel Grady.
Uh, would it be appropriate at this time, since you're talking about public discussion, to bring up my lady?
Okay, sorry. It didn't. Hold on, let me, just give me one second. Counsel, we're, we're having trouble pulling it up. You want to read it to us and we'll take it up as a late file? Motion to suspend rules and take up a late file?
Second.
Second.
Sure, okay.
All those in favor? All right, Counsel Grady.
All right. The City Council ordered that the City Council needs to establish a suitable location such as the Hoyoke High School gym or the Dean Tech cafeteria where the City Council can have public discussions on such agenda items as 4A, uh, 24 and 26, using the guidelines such as social distancing and masks. These items should have public input prior to being sent to committee and prior to being voted on by the entire City Council. Thank you.
So with that order for trying to establish committee meetings in a public place as a safe, uh, motion to send to Board of Health?
Todd, can I just say something real quick?
Ryan?
I'm just letting you know, right now, um, there was a problem with the audio, but it seems like it has just been fixed.
Okay. So.
I would just ask, maybe if you would have him repeat that, maybe it would be better for people at home that were watching.
Counsel Grady, because there is a little glitch in the, the audio, could you please repeat your order?
Sure. Ordered that the City Council needs to establish a suitable location such as the Hoyoke High School gym or the Dean Tech cafeteria where the City Council can have public discussion on such agenda items as 4A, numbers 24, numbers 26, using the guidelines such as social distancing and wearing masks. These items should have, these items on the agenda should have public input prior to being sent to the committee and prior to being voted on by the entire City Council. Thank you. Probably send to the Board of Health.
All right. So motion would to send to the Board of Health. All those in favor? All right. All those opposed? And they'll have the Board of Health get back to us and I'll follow up with them to see what their guidelines will be for, for that type of issue. Uh, I do believe Counsel McGivern, um, you would like a motion as well with regards to 4A?
My good Mr. Chairman, Mr. President, I'd make a motion that the City Council recess briefly to allow the Finance Committee to meet as allowed by our rules and as allowed by the agenda item this evening to, for the purpose of reporting out of committee, the statement of interest that the Hoyoke Public Schools have asked us to adopt. That, that being could take place right now with no one moving, and my intention would be that we would move it out to have a healthy discussion on a deadline that's approaching and the possibility of voting on the, the, uh, statement of interest this evening.
Todd, I second the motion.
All right. So it is, I can just.
Point of order.
Oh, oh, hold on one second. Ryan, is the audio still working? There was, someone might have texted in saying it wasn't.
Mrs. Gladys?
Ryan, you're on mute.
Hey Todd, so the, uh, the audio is working on the television now.
Okay. All right. Perfect. And Counsel LeBron Martinez has, has come in. Uh, Counsel Bacon?
Um, I have a point of order relative to this. Because the Finance Committee did not meet between our last meeting and this meeting, and they could have, and there is opportunity for the Finance Committee to meet in regular order between this meeting and the next meeting in May prior to any deadline that's indicated on the MSBA website. So why can't we just operate in regular order?
This is, I can answer that. This is proper order. We've done this in the past where finance or ordinance during a full City Council meeting, you can recess, those two committees can take up an action and refer it out to committee. Uh, there is a timeline. The state has said that they will not extend the timeframe and therefore having this, which was taken up once before in finance, that we can take it up again and take it out to the council. It allows us to have Doctors Reich here, allows us to have school committee Sheehan here, uh, and the mayor here in order to answer any questions that might be relevant to the issue and to the timeline. We also have, uh, Whitney Anderson here as well to deal with that as well. So it is a procedure that we have done in the past, and this, uh, actually deals with one of the biggest issues is social distancing. Um, I know some people, uh, may want to be down at City Hall. I know I would love down to be at City Hall to, to take on these issues, but right now the biggest request to us is distancing in order to make sure things get a little better. So this is the, the manner in which we have to do it.
Mr. President, my question is not on the legality of the procedure. It's on the necessity for doing it this way. I'm just thinking that we have time to have the meeting in the regular way so that the public could have full discussion in committee that would then make a recommendation to council. I'm just speaking in the regular order of business. I'm not indicating that I think this is illegal or that the procedure is out of order. I'm just asking if it's really necessary because we have adequate time to give it full discussion instead of pulling it out and doing it on the floor in the City Council meeting. That's my point. Thank you.
Understand. Back to Counsel McGivern.
Thank you.
So the motion was to, to recess and finance would take over after that. So on that motion, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All those opposed?
No.
So there was one no. Uh, were any other no's to be recorded? So they were, they were all.
Todd, I think Counsel Grady as well said no.
So Counsel Grady, Counsel Bacon said no. So the eyes have it, the majority has it. I'll turn this over now to the financial chair, which would be Counsel McGivern.
Thank you, Mr. President, and to all the members for, uh, allowing for this. I will open the Finance Committee at this point for the sole purpose of acting on a communication with the attached statement of interest sent to us from the Hoyoke Public Schools, Doctors Reich, and on behalf of the Hoyoke Public Schools and the mayor to allow this statement of interest to be filed with the MSBA. Um, and the motion to open up the meeting, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Or moved? Uh, this item is up for discussion. I, I think I have suggested for procedural purposes to keep it simple that instead of debating it with just us five members, that we would refer it immediately to the full City Council and have one debate with all 13 members and the guests who are with us this evening. The reason, and thank you, Mr. President, and to our city court for putting this on the agenda so that there was transparency, knowing that we were going to attempt to do this this evening. The reason we are attempting to do this is the MSBA has let Doctors Reich and the public schools know that they will not budge on the current deadline, which is May 6. The, uh, the purpose of, uh, doing it this way is, as our rules allow, is to have the Finance Committee bring it out of committee and put it up for a full vote. Uh, we did, to the members of the Finance Committee, we did have one meeting as the president pointed out during that meeting. We did have a lengthy public speak out. The total of, I believe it was close to 15 people spoke and gave us difference of a wide variety of opinions on the subject itself. Uh, we heard from Doctors Reich, we heard from, um, you know, the schools, we heard about the, um, what was going on with the MSBA. We know that this statement of interest is not our final vote. It's not even our final vote on going forward. A vote on going forward would be fun if there was, if the MSBA allowed for a project to be, to be taken up in their next cycle. The vote going forward would be a vote to provide the funds. There's a lot to be determined there is how much of the original study could be used or at least, you know, proposal on the mayor and one in the ordinance committee to set up committees to study this to bring the public in a great, in great detail to get input. There is a lot to be determined before we can even take the next vote itself. This would not commit us to anything other than a request to allow the city of Hoyoke to be considered for the next cycle coming year. Knowing that with the state budget and what's going on with the COVID crisis, we have no idea what the state budget is even going to support. So right now, I, I would ask the members of the committee if they wish that we could vote to refer this to the full City Council for, uh, for debate, the possibility of voting out of this evening, and then we can invite our guests in.
Motion to move to the full City Council?
One second.
Motion made a second to move the, the communication with the statement of interest from the public schools out of committee to the full City Council. Is there any discussion on that motion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
No.
All right.
Motion carries four to one. Motion to adjourn?
Second.
Second.
All those in favor?
All right.
Opposed, the Finance Committee stands adjourned. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you. Uh, motion would be to come out of recess for the full City Council.
Motion to come out of recess?
Second.
Those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? So we're back into the full City Council now. We'll take the Finance Committee. Uh, with that, uh, we heard the report from, uh, Counsel McGivern, who was the chair of finance, and it'll be up to discussions. I'll turn it over to Counsel McGivern and we'll go for, uh, those who are in the queue if they have questions.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'll just add a few things. Uh, thank you to the members of the Finance Committee for allowing this to proceed to the one, at least if for no other reason for some good discussion. I, I know Counsel Bacon has a good point. Uh, President and I did discuss this and we did look at the date, the calendar, we did look at the, the date lines, and we felt waiting till the May 5th would be a very 11th hour, um, discussion on a very important vote. Uh, we have the opportunity to keep the doors open by filing a statement of interest with the MSBA. Like I said in, in front of the committee, which I know everybody was listening to, there's a lot yet to be determined before anything else takes place. This has not, not put us in a position of, uh, of any, um, possible proposal unless we agree to, and, and remind that did fund the original proposal two years ago, and that was, that is an 80% reimbursement cost, unlike the actual construction costs themselves. So what we're, what we're looking at is to allow the, the schools with the, with the building committee to go forward and to, and to work with the MSBA to see if they would allow a, a project to go forward. Yeah, I'm not going to speak for Doctors Reich or for, for the public schools and the mayor at this point, but I think I would just remind everybody that the Finance Committee met about three hours on this project back in May on March 4th. Uh, during that time, we had a, a good presentation from the doctor. Much of what I said was, was reported to us. We have the copy in front of us and sometime in, uh, February, it's a similar statement of interest or certainly in format with different, uh, with, you know, with, with the same goal, but with a different, uh, different, uh, approach or to what the original project was, and it certainly does not bind us to anything in the original project unless approved by a building committee, approved by the City Council, and eventually the final vote would always be the approving of the final funding to pay for such a project. So what we did do at that meeting was after we heard the presentation, a lot of questions were asked by, uh, the members that were present of both the committee, uh, Counsel Murphy, Counsel Bacon, there's a number of members that asked questions. And what we, we knew that we, at that time, the deadline was going to be extended. We weren't too sure for how long. We now know that the extension is going to rest on that May 6th date. What more important is, I, as I stated in front, in, during the Finance Committee meeting a few minutes ago, is we held a public speak out with no limitations. We didn't hold speakers to any amount of time that they could speak. We allowed anyone to speak as many times as they wished to speak. And we had at least a dozen, between a dozen and 15 people who spoke out. Many of them were, were rehashing some of what happened with the original proposal of why it was wrong, why it went wrong. Many were asking about how to go forward on a very important issue to this, uh, to this city. Um, much of that comment, you know, and I'm sure everybody has heard it by now, but much of that kind of commentary was, was focused on a, a good approach with a lot of input from the public in the future. Um, that is, that looks to be part of what the goal will be with the committee that's being formed with the help of the ordinance committee and, and also with the building committee that has to be formed by the mayor. I, I'd love to see both of those committees with, with agreement, you know, somehow merge together and be able to get everybody together in the same room and work on this project before it's something that, you know, can go forward. With that in mind, I would ask, Mr. President, that we would, uh, suspend the rules to allow our speakers to, uh, to update us on what's going on. There is, Doctors Reich does have some updates on location, and, uh, we have some, uh, updates as far, or updates as far as the deadline goes, but updates as far as the, uh, what, what will be taking place next. And of course, as always, I, I welcome our mayor to, uh, share his vision, not just on the SLI, but on the building committee and what might be done in that, uh, on those matters.
All right. So with that, the motion is to suspend the rules to allow our guests to speak. That'd be Doctors Reich, the mayor, uh, Mike Bloomberg, uh, and City, uh, school committee member Devin Sheehan, all those.
I make a motion to have those people, second.
Okay.
Counsel Leahy?
No, I was just going to make the motion to have those gentlemen speak.
Okay. All right. So with that, everyone voted yes. So we'll turn it over to Doctors Reich. Thank you for being here. Hope all is well, and we'll turn it over to you.
Good evening, everybody. Um, can, can you hear me?
Yes.
Yes, we can.
I'm, I'm actually gonna, um, I'm gonna toss it over to Whitney Anderson, who's been more, most involved in putting together the statement of interest. So I'm gonna ask, uh, that Whitney just share with you the contents of what's in the statement of interest, and then we can turn it over for, you know, to questions. So, uh, Whitney, are you, it looks like you're unmuted as well.
Yes. Can people hear me?
Yes.
Yeah, we can hear you.
Wonderful. Thank you, Steve. Um, and thank you, Counsel.
Somebody hear me?
Yes, class, we can hear you.
Hi, I can, can, um, we have someone, there's got to be someone with a TV in the background.
Yeah, there is, yeah.
We can all hear it. Can please mute it or lower?
It's a delay, yeah. Somebody's got the meeting on.
Can we actually have everybody put mute on except for the person that's talking?
How to work too?
Well, except for the person who's talking. You're gonna have to hear the TV in the back. So whoever has the TV on, shut off.
Perfect.
Very good.
There you go.
So again, thank you for, uh, this opportunity. What we have here is a, a, a potential invitation from the state, should you decide to accept it, to participate in the school building assistance program. Um, we've done this successfully, uh, with our, our accelerated repair projects recently and have done some nice improvements to three of our schools, of which you can all see the benefits that have afforded us. Um, those projects are different than the core project of which we are considering tonight, which you're considering tonight. And what happens now is that the state has an eligibility timeline for the this submittal, which is a, an opportunity for us again to come into consideration before the Board of Directors at the MSBA for a, a project to enhance your portfolio of schools, and in this instance, most likely to modernize and to update the, the, uh, the availability for the schoolchildren in the city of Hoyoke. So it comes on a specific timeline, May 6th, which is, uh, nine business days from today. Is the deadline for that, during which time there's a rather lengthy application process that I will fill out on behalf of the city, should you desire to go ahead. And, uh, that can be submitted electronically with signatures from the appropriate parties. So part, the, the first requirement for the statement of interest on the application process is to cite a location. Well, coming off of our last experience here, we actually had two different locations, and there is a tremendous need for community input in order to ascertain the desired target for this particular, uh, effort. Now with that in mind, we, our, our first inclination, and Doctors Reich had spoken to Mr. McCarthy, the CEO of the School Building Authority, and telling him that we did not desire to place a location into the application, and he had insisted that that must take place. And so at this time, in order to proceed with that, we need to do that, but it is all subject to further consideration by the School Building Advisory Committee, which will be, uh, appointed at a time in which, um, should the need arise with this passing tonight, if it, it is so, uh, so, so be it. And then with that in mind, then, uh, further reflections and much discussion can take place in regards to the specific location. So that really is just a brief summary, if you will, of what is in consideration this evening. And, uh, I think it, unless you'd like to ask questions, I can elaborate further if that would be necessary, or you can, um, choose to, uh, have others speak in regards to the effort.
I, I just like to add, I would just like to add just two quick points. Uh, it, it, nothing precludes the city of Hoyoke and the mayor from appointing a building committee, uh, now or at any point in, in the, in the future, uh, in the near future. It doesn't have to wait till the building is um, accepted into the, in the pipeline for further construction. I just want to be clear, that came up in our last meeting. Um, so a building committee could be appointed at any, at any point. Uh, secondly, um, we did, we, uh, based on the feedback we received from public input and from the, uh, Finance Committee, we, I did make a commitment to include a disclaimer in the proposal that would say that Hoyoke would like, would reserve, like to reserve the right to have further discussions regarding the location, because there's there was a lot of discussion about, uh, location, and even though Jack McCarthy and the MSBA insisted on picking one location, um, you know, I, I, we can certainly include in the disclaimer, in the narrative that we would be, um, that we would reserve the right to have further discussions about whether it would be the tech site, the Lawrence site, or some other site in Hoyoke.
And the only other thing I would like to add to this initial opening is that this is a non-appropriation vote. This is just perhaps to be engaged in the process should the state decide to accept our statement of interest or further conversation. Non-appropriation vote this evening, should you decide to proceed.
And any questions for our speakers? Any questions at all in general or comments? I'm looking at the side. I don't see any hands up or anything. Counseler Bartley?
Yeah, I, I hope you can hear me. It's, I've been having some technical difficulties. I've been letting Ryan know, so, um, let, let me know if you can't, and, uh, yeah, the, the small computer, uh, com- computer shut down. Um, yeah, Whitney, the, the only, you, you, you spoke, you didn't speak about, um, you gotta be kidding me. Uh, hold on a sec, guys.
Dave, we can hear you fine.
Yeah, it's working great, Dave.
Yeah, we can see you and hear you.
Yeah, I, okay, I apologize for that. I'm having a little, uh, still having technical problems. Thanks, guys. The, um, the, the affordability issue, um, Whitney and, and Mrs. Reich and Mayor, Mr. Bloomberg, the, um, the affordability issue is, is kind of somewhere, um, you're lost in translation or not discussed here. So I, 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 I have the memo in front of me. Can Hoyoke afford a new building? And, and in, in, in this statement of interest, the, the one I'm reading anyhow dated, uh, February, I think it's the 13th, and, and it's from, it's from Steve's Reich, Anthony Soto, Whitney Anderson, and Aaron Linville. And in, in here, it's, it says, it, it says for, for the state, uh, for can, can Hoyoke afford it? It, it, it re- re- reiterates what, what happened last year's vote, so we all know that. Then it moves on to the next paragraph, says Hoyoke HPS still, still intends to dedicate 0.5 million per year to a new school building. Okay? And, and then, and then it says, uh, uh, it, it talks about the original amount, and then, then it goes into the capacity, and then there, there really isn't, there really isn't a lot of meat on that bone, and, and I just want to direct, uh, I, I just want to direct the, the, the listening audience and everybody here in this Zoom meeting just to two things from, uh, that I read, uh, today from the MSBA website, and there's no doubt the MSBA website said, uh, May 6th is the, uh, is the deadline. Uh, I, I, I didn't, I didn't read from that that that's a hard and fast deadline. I, I I didn't read from that, that that's a hard and fast deadline. I, I, I didn't read from that anything relative to the, uh, state, state of the uh, Commonwealth's current economic condition, which as we know is, is most likely going to be disastrous. Uh, same with the city of Holyoke. But, but I, I, so I'm, but I'm gonna leave, leave May 6th to, um, to, to, to what was, uh, what was stated earlier by Mr. Anderson. It says, and I quote, "An SOI should only be filed for a facility where the district has the financial ability to proceed with a construction project at this time." Now, there is another part in here and I, I read a little further, it said, "An SOI should only be filed for a facility where a district has ability to fund a construction project in the next two years." So that, that's, that's kind of, um, it, it, kind of due to two different minds, but the, the fact is that there's gotta be some kind of financial uh, capability, uh, for the city of Holyoke. So I, 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 I read what the, what was, uh, reported in, in the SOI for the half million dollars. Besides that, I'm assuming that that, that pot of money is available. I'll take it at face value, uh, for now. Uh, what is, where is a source of funds from the city of Holyoke's government relative to this project? Can anyone identify it? And the amount?
I can't project three years of revenue growth. But if we continue at the revenue growth that we saw for the past three years, which is unlikely to, to happen for this next fiscal year, but at the point that we need to start cutting checks for a school year, um, then, then that's what revenue projections suggest. We, we know that revenue projections are anywhere between two and a half and four percent per year. Now, it's no longer, it, it would not be, even today, it would not be a question of whether we have the money for it. It's a question of whether we prioritize it over other city expenditures. And I think that's an ongoing conversation that, that needs to have or happen over the next two, three years. And certainly, certainly before an, any project is, is voted on. Now, I would say that prior to the November ballot, there was a a considerable effort to get finite numbers on how those specific projects would be funded, where that money could come from and, and how we would go about that. And I think that would be a requirement for any voted on proposal coming forward. But to, to the best of my understanding, and, and Whitney, you can correct me if I'm wrong, this is literally a procedural vote just to be allowed into the pipeline to create and present a plan. Once that plan is presented and created, um, there's, there's no vote, there's no, there's nothing going on here that, that commits the city to paying for anything, uh, that we would have, A, a much better situation and much better handle on what next year's financial situation looks like for the Commonwealth, for the, for the city, especially for the country. And, and we very well could be in a position where, where nobody's building anything. Um, but to try to make that projection out three years, even one year right now, I think would, would be a silly thing. So really, it just comes down to do we pass a procedural vote to allow us to enter in this pipeline? Um, or, or do we want to keep going around in circles, having this conversation?
So, uh, so I, I, so I, I, I don't think, um, not to throw your words back at you, uh, Mr. Bloomberg, I, I, I don't think budgeting is a silly thing. I, I don't think, I think budgeting is a vital thing. And that is my point that despite the rhetoric we heard for the last, during, running up to last year's election, that this had been talked about since 2015, 2016. The fact is that we have not budgeted dollar one as a city government to this. I think it's imperative that we do that. But never mind what I think. The MSBA says it. SOI should only be filed for a facility where the district has the financial ability to proceed with a construction project at this time. The city of Holyoke, as we know, had almost a half a million dollar negative free cash, $464,000 this year. Fortunately, du- due to the real estate market, we, we were able to, to free up some money so that we could limp through, hopefully limp through to June 30th. None of us foresaw this, but this is a reality now. So I, I think, Mr. President, it, it, it's just my opinion that while I, I, I agree in principle that we, we have to support our public schools to, to the extent that we possibly can. I think this vote is nothing but hypocritical, Mr. President. I think it's a, it's false hope to say that budgeting is silly is really, um, insulting to the, to the taxpayer. I, 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 I think it's, it's monumentally consequential that we identify some funds. I gave them and I don't, you know, they haven't, the, the, the public schools never frankly identified the half million dollars, Mr. President, which I think is gonna be a drop in the bucket. But they, I, I'm, I'm gonna demand that they identify it, but because the, the run-up to last year's vote, they, they were saying a million dollars, which, which the, I, I didn't buy it and clearly 65% of the voting populace didn't buy it either. And, and so I, I just think, I just think based on this, I think we've got a, and, and with the economic condition, I, I think this should be tabled for now. I'm willing to come back, uh, May 5th and, and have this meeting if, if, if the, if Mr. Zright, if the mayor, Mr. Bloomberg, anybody can identify the source of revenue on which we can rely. Because right now, they haven't. Thank you.
Alright, hold on. So I know, uh, Whitney Anderson was trying to answer a question. He was raising his hands. And I do have, you know, Counselor Sullivan, I see I have the chart up of everyone who's raised their hand, but uh, I know I, I did see, uh, Mr. Anderson raises hand, so I'd like to go over to him because that was, uh, about three or four minutes ago.
Oh, thank you. Just in comments to Mr. Bloomberg, uh, what happens now is with this statement of interest, this is not a start of a communication in regards to a direct back and forth with the state. The state will receive our communication. And they'll, then they will inform us on whether or not we're invited to communicate. So just because we file a statement of interest does not mean anything's gonna happen unless the state decides that they wish to entertain Hoyoke as a candidate in this program. So we, if that is the case, there's a very specific timeline of which, uh, the chronology unfolds with the board of directors from the School Building Advisory, pardon me, from the, uh, the MSBA. And then there is a 180-day period of which the city has an opportunity to respond. So this is looking quite a bit into the future. And the whole idea here now is to try to entertain a conversation. If the city, in its wisdom, after analyzing all of the information, decides that they, they do not have the appropriate funds, the state outlook at this time is not anything of which would allow us to entertain an investment of this regard on behalf of the city, then they can just say no and, um, not desire to proceed. And there is no obligation to the city. But in order to entertain a conversation, to even establish a cost for a project of this, uh, nature, we have to at, at least indicate to start the project to, for this submittal. Because we don't, we don't even know the cost at this point because we haven't established a project. I do understand and appreciate that what the city voted previously, I voted as well. And we, we have a clear, uh, opportunity now to adjust those parameters and then to, to make recommendations based on a wide view from a, a, an advisory board, which I'm sure will be reflecting very cautiously but prudently on behalf of the city. Thank you.
Alright, so hands came up over a period of time. The first one up was, uh, Counselor LaBarre Martinez. So I'll turn it over to you, Counselor.
She's muted.
Ryan, she's muted. Can you unmute her? Her? Is there a way to unmute her, Ryan? Can you hear me? Can hear you now, yes.
Everybody should be able to unmute them themselves when they.
Okay.
So, so what I'm understanding, this is just an intent of an application. This is not a commitment from us regardless. There's not dollars committed in this request of, uh, this application, correct? That, that is all they're asking is, are we interested or not? Demonstrating an, an, an interest, um?
That, that is correct.
Right? So what would happen if we didn't and we missed the deadline? What would happen now? When would we have to wait for this again, if we ever had the money to move forward?
Another year.
Okay, okay.
Alright, next was Counselor Bacon. Counselor Bacon, you're muted. You have to unmute. Right.
Okay.
There it is.
Thank you. Um, so through you to the Chair of Finance, out of that meeting in March, there were two main questions. The one that I'm wondering if the Chair had any response, our auditor on, was the question of the availability of bonding that could be brought to bear for this project. That was the main financial question that came out of that meeting. And I'm just wondering if anything was ever submitted back to Finance on that? To the Chair, if he can hear me.
Thank you, I can. Um, the, the issue of bonding is the issue of how much are we bonding for, of course, obviously. And we don't know what we're bonding for until we have a project that's accepted by the MSBA to go forward. And, and that's why we can't determine any cost at this point. But we can ask the MSBA to open the door for us. I said it last year, I'm gonna say it again this year, that the city of Hoyoke and probably very few communities within the Commonwealth can afford a school building project without the assistance from the state government. And a gateway community cannot afford a school building project without the 80% reimbursement, what used to be 90% reimbursement, uh, formula that was used. The construction cap has to change. That is the legislature, the governor, I think, and then the governor's trying to say it's the treasurer. But that is something that's being looked at and needs to be looked at. We, we have some bonding capacity. This bonding, I, I, you know, I didn't anticipate this type of question this evening on, on the statement of interest, but this bonding capacity certainly needs to be known before we vote on any bonds, which are not in front of us and won't be in front of us sometime. And when we do vote on it, a big part of the capacity is determined by the reimbursement rate. Because if, if we bond for, for eight million dollars and it's 80% reimbursed, the city is only, is only budgeting for the, the, uh, 20% that, you know, we have to pay for ourselves. That reimbursement comes on an annual basement. The payments are annual based on what the full bond is, but the state reimburses immediately. I'm not sure if that answers your question fully, but again, I didn't anticipate that question for this evening's purposes.
Well, it, to be clear, it doesn't answer my question because what was raised in the public meeting was, we wanted to understand what our capacity for bonding was. And we were looking for our auditor to get back to us. We knew we wouldn't have exact numbers, but we did understand what our obligation would be in the last proposal. And we could reasonably guesstimate that it would be around half of what it originally was. But what I'm seeking is, did we get any information at all? Or since March, we have not received any is the sense I'm getting, that we haven't looked at this yet. We need to know what capacity we have, in my view. And right now, when we have every business in the city, other than a central business, closed, I think until we're in a place where we can at least see a plan for the reopening, I just think it's irresponsible to take a step where we're stipulating, we have the funding for a project that Counselor Bartley has referenced is on the very same website as the deadline. So I don't know how we have to take certain parts of the website as gospel and other parts don't really mean what they say. I just don't see how we can parse that. But, um, that's my perspective on the matter. And relative to the earlier comments made about the building committee, that has been tabled and ordained since December of 2019. So if there's any interest in moving that forward, it could have been long ago done. And we could have been talking about this in the transparent and collaborative manner that we're all referring to, but we're not doing. Thank you.
Counselor Tallman was next.
Uh, you got it?
Gotcha.
You hear me?
Yes.
Okay. Yeah, this is, uh, to, uh, Dr. Zright. Um, and I, I know this is just a statement of interest, but I'm concerned, you mentioned about the School Building Authority. Uh, I mean, School Building Advisory Committee and how that would be set up, uh, and who would set that up? Because I'm looking at a, you know, something different than it was last time, a general population of, of maybe, uh, you know, teachers, uh, school committee, council members, uh, parents, um, a, a more diverse group of people that could be on this committee. I just wondered how that would, uh, start and who would be the ones, uh, getting the committee together.
Uh, so, um, the, after the, uh, the, the failed, uh, vote and the, or the, the vote in November and the project uh, was voted out of the MSBA pipeline, it immediately suspends the building committee that was associated with that project. Right? Though right now, there isn't a building committee. Um, the, the, the law is set up so that the mayor makes an appointment, um, of folks to the building committee. Um, but some communities have permanent, a permanent building committee that, or, uh, you know, a building committee can be established prior to a project being, um, you know, accepted if, if that's the, if that's the wish of the committee and, um, but right now in Holyoke, the mayor has authority to appoint a new committee. Um, and he could choose to do so, um, at, at any time. And, and that, uh, and that committee would, uh, could in fact be the, that would be the new committee, um, as, associated with a new project. So, um, but right now, there is no building committee. And, you know, I think there is an appetite from everybody that I've spoken to to have a wider va- range of perspectives and a, a better balance of, um, uh, you know, perspectives and backgrounds, uh, to form the committee than what we had, uh, previously.
Okay, thank you.
And, and I would just echo, uh, what, what Steve said, uh, and thanks for the question, Counselor Tallman. And, uh, yeah, I assume that the statement of interest would, would advance and, and then, you know, given, given the need to create a school building committee, I could then appoint a new committee that would essentially replace the committee that we had before. But as Steve said, he is correct, there is no committee at this point. I know there's also an order, uh, before the council about creating a separate committee. I just want to remind counselors that that would, that committee wouldn't have any official, um, authority in regards or to the perspective of the MSBA in terms of actually advancing the project and making decisions that a school building authority has under state law. And so under the law as well, there's requirements as to having certain members that reflect certain areas of the community. So city counselor, school committee member, um, someone in construction, uh, city resident. And so there are certain guidelines you have to meet. Uh, but I think we heard loud and clear that people want a more, uh, representative sample, get new, new voices and new faces on the committee. And so, you know, while I have all the counselors here, I would encourage, um, if you yourself is interested and/or you have constituents that might be interested in serving on the committee, I always say this, please email me, um, your thoughts, you know, it is my appointment. Um, I believe without council confirmation, and so I would really welcome any input that any counselors have to create that committee. And I would just echo, you know, what, what has been said before. I think if, if we don't get the statement of interest and now we automatically move to the, to, to then a year from now, when we're able to put in a new statement of interest, we're not committing to any financial appropriation, uh, this evening by advancing, uh, this. Um, and again, it's a question of priorities. We have the capacity to bond for it. Uh, it's a question of what other decisions will we have to make in the budget? Uh, will we have the revenues? Again, I think we'd be premature to, to make that exact precaution. I think it's important to move on this, but I think the more pressing conversations overall, um, and I can only be here a few more minutes, is to have a conversation about what the next fiscal year looks like and budgeting is important. And we had a, a set of, of budget priorities um, in line for the next fiscal year, obviously to present. Um, but every assumption we had pre this pandemic is, is out the window. And so in city government and may look very different than it did before this pandemic. And that's the case for cities and towns all across Massachusetts and all across our country. And I think it's gonna be very important for all of us to work together just to, to figure out what exactly government does look like in the next fiscal year, because it's gonna be a difficult several months and perhaps a difficult year when you think about the conversations I'm having with fellow mayors. year when you think about the conversations I'm having with fellow mayors, when you think about the lottery revenue, when you think about income tax revenue going down at the state, things that cities and towns like Holyoke oftentimes rely on. And then even just locally, meals and tax revenue, property taxes. And we're doing our best to get a sense of revenue now versus last year, moving forward, changing projections. But we're not the only community going through this. And so we're going to get a lot of partnership, a lot of support. But I just want to make the Council aware that, not tonight, but in the weeks to come, we're going to have to have a lot of conversations about what next year looks like, big picture, down to specific details. And we'll assure you that our finance team is having those conversations now. But I think the question tonight is, you know, this Statement of Interest gets us at least to the point where we can further consider this, study it, get an amount, and go from there. But I think it would be a disservice to the people of Holyoke to not to not go forward on one school or at least get very close to it at this point. And I'm confident if our priority is making this investment, we'll have the resources to do that when the time comes.
Thank you, Mayor.
So can we move on the question and let's vote on this if we're gonna vote on this?
I second that.
I want to make comments.
Hold on, hold on, hold on. Counselor Murphy was next. Mine was muted somehow. Counselor Murphy was next, then Counselor Sullivan.
Okay, a few things. First of all, I mean, it is just a Statement of Interest. It is something that we're being asked and putting ourselves in line. So, I mean, I'm not going to vote against that, even though I have a lot of questions about how we're gonna do it. But I do have some points that I made at the Finance Meeting I want to make. And I think one of those, first of all, was that it's absolutely vital that however we do this, that we do it and we can enhance community involvement in the discussions and the decisions, and eventually try to provide a united community in support of whatever potential new school we're talking about. I mean, we can't do this and go in opposite directions. And we, nobody may get what they really want, so we need to figure out a way to work together. Couple of things, and there's some goals that I think need to be as we get along, assuming we do file this Statement of Interest and the state does accept it. And this is a question before I go into my goals, I guess probably to Doctors Reich. If we are to file this and we were to get accepted, when do we need to give them more specifics as to which site we might be choosing?
Yeah, Whitney, do you want to weigh in on that, Whitney, in the timeframe? I don't want to...
Sure. The state is very specific in regards to our response, should we be invited into the process. And what happens is that while we are the primary customer, if you will, for the benefit of this program, they do require that we have advisors. And one of the specific advisors is the OPM or the Owner's Project Manager. That is the first person to come on board to help us with the general nature of identifying the task ahead of us, which is to look at the city infrastructure, but also to make sure that we are able to comply with the state's requirement. It's quite a complicated process as far as paperwork goes and the establishment of budgets, and they are our primary advisors in that regard. But when that does happen concurrently, there'll be School Building Advisory Committees established and then meeting, but also a designer comes on board very, very soon after the OPM. And they then would formulate that type of awareness for us in regards to the site availabilities, as well as we would let them know what our specific desires are. So, not wanting to get off target here as far as your specific desires, but that is the initial chronology of what happens. What does take place is that that initial formulation and those primary desires that come together in the form of a written document that's submitted to the state, that has a specific timeline to it as well, and that's a hundred and eighty days from the time in which we are accepted into the process and we have established our advisors. So that's a specific, as I can be right now, Counselor Murphy.
Thank you. But from a, you know, in terms of when we might expect a financial decision from our part, would we be talking fiscal twenty-two, twenty-three?
Yeah, Counsel President, it looks like Mr. Sheen wanted to weigh in on this. Is that okay if he can answer that question?
Counsel Sheen?
Yeah, so I think what, just with the timeframe, what the MSBA typically would do, and that would be in a situation where there was an April deadline, because that was the previous deadline before all of this, is that most Statements of Interest are acted on in their December meeting. That is when they typically review those. So for, let's take a look at last year, and last year they were reviewed in the, they were submitted by the April deadline, they were voted on in their December meeting. And I can't imagine there would be a financial requirement that would impact anything until FY twenty-two, correct, Steve? Yeah, Steve's shaking his head, but yeah, it would be FY twenty-two is when we'll be looking, not twenty-one. Within what is their typical process? If that answers, is that answer what you were asking, Counsel Murphy?
That gives me a better idea, thank you. So let me just go, a few other things that I have concerns about. And Counselor Bartley, Counselor Bacon both brought them up, obviously from a financial perspective. I think, you know, and we've been talking about this, and we need to really document our financial capacity. Obviously, right now, our financial capacity has changed pretty significantly or going to change significantly. But we need to find out where we were, where we might be, and make sure that we're in a position that we can in fact do this without jeopardizing other vital city services. So that's number one. The second part would be that the school is educationally sound, but if we can build or alter it so that we get a higher reimbursement from the MSBA, then we need to consider doing that. Because clearly, if we can be in a better position to afford it within our city budget and still provide a better educational environment for our students, then we should be doing that. So it doesn't necessarily have to be as big or maybe with as many enhancements, as long as we are providing an effective educational opportunity. The other thing, and I think this, and this is what I tried to talk about and I was concerned about at the March fourth meeting, was that, you know, obviously, we're gonna have to tell them, we're either gonna, right now, we're starting either the PEC site or the Chestnut Street site. But, you know, we haven't, we've got questions that I certainly think need to get answered before we ever went forward. I know we don't have to make that commitment. But some things that I really want to encourage, and I know Doctors Reich, you're gonna be leaving, and certainly, hopefully, whoever comes in can help out with these questions, but some of the questions that should be answered. If the PEC school site is chosen, where do the students currently attending PEC now school? Now, if we build that Chestnut Street, we would assume that those students are still gonna be going to PEC and eventually other students would get transferred to the Chestnut Street site. If, and is there a potential that if they are not at PEC, that they're gonna end up having to actually go out of town? I know we talked about that last year, and I think that's something that really needs to, and if so, what's the cost to the city? I know one of the arguments and one other point would be the Veritas Prep. I know we have a contract with them, I think through next year at PEC. I'm assuming if PEC was chosen, we'd have to find out some other way to handle that contract. And lastly, one of the big arguments about taking PEC is that the state would pay for demolition. With everything that we've done with the state so far through this process, we were told that if you don't pass this, you're gonna go to the end of the line. Obviously, we're not going to the end of the line, or at least it doesn't appear we're going to the end of the line. It would seem to me that if we ended up doing the Chestnut Street site and eventually thought, all right, we want to do PEC, that the state would still be in a position to say, we're gonna do demolition, we'll help you with the construction. So those are all concerns. Benefits of the Chestnut Street site to me, though, are several. Number one, the students would know, current students would know where they're going to school. They wouldn't be going out of town. And in terms of the Churchill neighborhood, we would be creating a stable environment for the Churchill neighborhood and putting a foundation right in a corner next to the library where we've done work, next to the work that the Wayfinders are doing in terms of housing. And we would certainly kind of solidify that part of downtown, which I think is a major asset, and does that while still providing educational opportunities. So those are all concerns that I have. I'm certainly gonna vote to send this forward with the idea that we can change it. But I do hope that we start getting all this other information and get it in detail. Thank you.
Counselor Sullivan?
Thanks, everybody. Listen, I took the time and went to Boston, met with the MSBA, with a group from the city here. Jack McCarthy was very, very poignant and blunt in his affirmation that he wants to work with the city of Hooyok, understands special needs and difficulties up here. Of interest, yes, we should have the financial ability, it doesn't say we must. As far as identifying funds, all of that's premature. Let me give you something else to think about. Supposing the MSBA, the legislature, the governor comes out with a new program a couple of months from now where they recognize the city of Hooyok's special needs, right? And I know this is a long shot, but suppose they said, you know what, we're gonna pay a hundred percent. We're gonna do something really special for Hooyok. Guess what? Because we haven't put in a Statement of Interest, a simple Statement of Interest, you can forget the conversation about the location of it, you can forget any conversation about whether we can afford it or not, it's all out the window because we didn't put in a letter of interest. That's all this is. Let's get on with it and let's get it done.
Counselor Hernandez, you had your hand up earlier, not sure if it just came down or...
No, I put it down because other counselors have addressed the question that I was going to talk about, which was that I would like for this to go in the pipeline and that, just like Mike Sullivan says, I second what he's saying, that it's just smart and it would be a benefit to Hooyok just to have it in the pipeline. And then we have time to come back as a group and decide and identify and lay out a scope of services and cost. Thank you.
Counselor Leahy? You're muted?
You might be.
Yep, there you go.
First of all, this is obviously an incredibly important subject. You know, it seems like yesterday, back in, was it 2019, during the summer, sometime August, that the city was pretty much awarded seventy-three million dollars for the two new schools. And, you know, the residents, we went to vote and they voted. And now we have the opportunity to send a Statement of Interest to Boston, to the MSBA. And for that, I want to thank Counselor, Counselor Mayor Morse, Doctors Reich, Anthony Soto, Devin and the School Committee, and Whitney. This is obviously a very important thing to do. I also want to thank Michael Moyarty, Michael Moyarty, and I spoke for a good length of time talking about the Statement of Interest. Now, this is the first step. Now, I understand that the funding, and I also understand the location of the one middle school will happen down the road. So that's not something we're going to forget. This is not something that we are going to, you know, not talk about. I think we'll probably talk about it more than we have in the past. One of the things I just wanted to make it public that I am in agreement with Joe. I think that if the state doesn't give the city of Hooyok eighty percent, there's no way we could fund it. Seventy-three million dollars is a lot of money, but we have to make sure that we get the full eighty percent of it. If you look online, towns that are going to be in front of us, like Orange, Abrahill, Revere, Boston, Worcester, East Brookfield, Webster, they're putting in their applications now. So when people say we're going to go to the back of the line, that's not a joke. And so once again, I want to thank Doctors Reich, Alex Morris, Mike Moyarty, Tony Soto, and the people that kept us alive. We need the eighty percent, but we also need and owe it to our schoolchildren to build a 21st century school. Right now, they don't have that. Right now, they don't have that. Now, we obviously have to do it in the best interest of the whole community. We have to make sure that, you know, every taxpayer money that is spent is spent for something good and pretty much the best we can get. We want to make sure that we don't have to go into the pockets of our taxpayer people and try to get the most money from from the state. I have a question, Whitney. Whitney, are you there? Ryan, is Whitney there?
Yes.
Whitney, how long is the, how long will it take you to fill out this application?
It's a couple of days, Counselor.
All right, so it's not something you're gonna do in an afternoon, so it's a time-consuming effort, correct?
Yeah, and there are numerous people involved. We have enrollment projections, we have maintenance data, which is required from the state that we need to input, and also a series of signatures. We need certification from the City Clerk of the Vote, and a variety of things need to get put together. Then it's a digital submitter followed by a hard copy.
Okay, and that's what I was thinking, because when we're talking about, you know, voting on the eleventh hour, this certainly is not the eleventh hour. We could have had a Finance Meeting coming up, and then we'd have to vote on our next City Council Meeting, and that would be the eleventh hour. But I also think that we have to give Whitney time for doing his due diligence. And that certainly would not be fair if we waited to the last second to do so. So having said that, I think that what we're doing is no other than filling out a Statement of Interest to letting the state, MSBA, know that we're still interested in their help in building a 21st century school for our kids. Thank you.
Counselor Bacon, I still see you have a hand up?
I'm all set, thank you.
Okay. With that, Counselor Graney, I know you're not able to put the hand up, but do you have a question because you're on the phone?
No, I'm not on the phone. I just want to make sure if we pass this item, that we are gonna get immediate action from the city government to get into the financial aspects of it and to get into the location aspects of it, so that when the committee is formed, and it should be formed as soon as we pass this, if we do, so that the members of the community can get to work on this project. And it should be a priority, if it's a priority, it should be done, it should be done stat, it should be done as soon as possible. So, you know, I'm going to go ahead and support this, but I expect that the founding fathers of this city would expect that the city government will move rapidly to get all the information out to the counselors and to the taxpayers so that they can understand exactly what's going on. And I do agree with Counselor Lee that our students do need a 21st century school, but we need to move on it rapidly. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Counselor McGivern?
Thank you, Mr. President. A very healthy and a very good discussion. I want to thank everybody. I agree with just about everything that's been said. On the finances, I just wanted to point out one thing, is interest rates are at an all-time low due to the pandemic that we're going through and due to the economic crisis the country's going through. I have a feeling that construction bids at some point are gonna be at an all-time low. We just deserve the opportunity to see and to test that, if the MSBA allows us to see where it is. I think we could funders with a lot less money than what happened with the proposal, previous proposal. With the location, you heard from Whitney Anderson, and Doctors Reich shook his head. We're making sure, gentlemen, that the MSBA understands we want flexibility with location and that the Building Committee will have flexibility, if there's two Building Committees, have the flexibility of looking at location. And with that in mind, Mr. President, I would move the motion to adopt the ability to allow our Superintendent Receiver of Schools to enter into an SOI with the MSBA on school building assistance for a school building project.
Second. Motion is to receive and adopt to allow the...
Second motion to go forward, it's been seconded.
Counselor Bacon?
Thank you, Mr. President. The only question I have is if we send in this SOI and according to what Whitney was saying relative to the people we have to bring on board right away, what kind of costs will we be incurring relative to that?
Mr. President, if I can answer that a little bit?
Yep, go ahead.
I'm glad Counselor Bacon asked that. That's a good, good question. I'm glad, I'm glad Counselor Vacan asked that. That's a good, good question. There is no money to pay for that at this point in time. That's the next vote. That would take a, a bond that would be the one that we did, uh, two years ago, was the one point one million dollars that was
Right.
First at eighty, eighty percent, despite, nothing to do with the cap on construction. In order for anyone to be hired, for any project manager, for any, I forget the title Whitney used, the city, the mayor and the city council has to appropriate money easier through a bond or through another, another method of being able to pay for that. There is no money anywhere that can be used for that purpose. So if the MSBA says, go ahead, let's, let's take it to the next level, then we're gonna have a very serious finance discussion just on, just on that one vote for the upfront money. And then down the road, if we keep going, the big vote is the full bonding for the whole project. And again, as a number of people have agreed with me, I think we need to get close to that eighty percent.
Thank you for reminding the public of that.
Alright, so with that, the clerk will call the roll. If you're voting yes, you're voting for, uh, allowing the schools to go forward.
Anderson Burgos?
Yes.
Bartley?
Yes.
Graney? Hernandez?
Yes.
Leahy? I didn't hear Jim.
He's, he's muted. Jim, you're muted.
Yeah, uh, I say yes.
LeBron Martinez?
I'm mute.
Gladys, you're muted as well.
Can rain just on you, everybody. Gladys?
Yes.
Lisi?
Yes.
McGee?
Yes.
McGivern?
Yes.
Murphy?
Yes.
Sullivan?
Yes.
Tomlin?
Yes.
Bacon? Does she use her? Bacon?
Counselor Bacon, you're, you're muted.
Yes.
Unanimous vote.
With your vote, you approve the SOI to go forward.
Mr. President, if I can recognize?
Yeah, Counselor?
We'd like to make a motion to proceed out of order. We have one more guest with us this evening on a specific item. The item number thirty on the agenda, which is a bond. That's why Sergeant Hart is
Alright, motion is suspend rules, go out of order to number thirty. All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Hearing none, that would be unanimous. Thirty is in accordance with Mass General Law, Chapter forty-four, Section fifty-three A, the city council hereby accept the provisions of the Substance Abuse and Mental Health Services Administration grant. Motion be to, Counsel, you wanna act on it today or?
Make a motion to pass the first reading.
Motion is to receive, adopt, pass the first reading under discussion. Counselor McGivern?
Thank you, Mr. President. Thank you, Sergeant Hart, for being here. Real quick, then I'll turn it over to John. Uh, the amount of the grant is, is this year three hundred twenty-nine thousand, three hundred eighty-six dollars. There's no mass from the city. The city would have both a liaison crisis intervention officer on board, uh, an administrator, twenty percent of the salary of administrator will be paid out of the grant. Uh, we'll be working, the city will be working with BHN and with, uh, UMass and, I'm sorry, BHN on the, uh, the crisis parts of the, uh, of the interventions and UMass with the, uh, with the, I better let John explain this a little bit better, but UMass with the, uh, with the study and the, uh, the actual evaluations of what's going on. Um, this is, this is not just a, a one-year grant. It's a potential being a five-year grant of the, uh, similar amount of money totaling close to one point five million dollars. Um, we, we have to accept it as a city. The city will be the administrator, which, you know, the police department has agreed to do. There's a similar grant that we accepted, John, I think it was a year ago or maybe two years ago now, uh, working in this, this type of a field. A lot of this money is available because of the opioid crisis. And I think our police department has been second to none in their response to, to identifying and to working with people and doing intervention, not just the, uh, the crime, um, crime, um, intervention that they do, but doing intervention to help people. Uh, the courts, I have to make a disclosure that the courts would be involved with the referrals. This, I believe, is either the district attorney's office and or sometimes through the judge. Um, to my knowledge, probation department is not directly involved. Uh, it's a kind of a diversion program for first-time offenders. But at the same time, I, I just wanted to put that out there for, uh, for the purpose of a disclosure. Although I don't believe I, I have to. I think I wanna be transparent. So with that in mind, Mr. President, if we could allow Sergeant Hart to address anything that I missed and then open it up for questions and answers.
Motion is to allow, uh, Sergeant Hart to answer questions. All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Sergeant Hart, how are you?
Good. How are you, Counselor?
Well, thanks. We'll turn it over to you a little bit about the grant and anything that Joe, uh, might have missed.
Okay, Joe pretty much covered it up. Um, basically, uh, like he said, this is a, uh, early diversion, um, grant through SAMSA that's going to, um, uh, help those people suffering from, uh, serious mental illness and also, uh, um, coexisting, uh, diseases as well to include, um, uh, veterans. Um, so it's a community-based, uh, mental health program, um, and a, a diversion. So we will be working with the DA, um, probation, um, and the courts. And, uh, one of our goals is to try and, uh, decrease the number of persons with, uh, mental illness, um, who are involved in the legal system to divert them from, um, the legal system, whether it be at the, the state of um, arrest or, um, at the courts. So we're trying to, uh, increase the number of access points for those, uh, individuals where we can intervene and divert them from, uh, from the criminal justice system. Um, it's similar to our opioid grant where we have two, uh, narcotics intervention officers. So this is gonna pay for the salary of one, um, crisis intervention officer who will be working with, um, two, um, full-time master's degree level clinicians. Um, hopefully, we're in, we're in the planning phase, um, of trying to, um, have them in our, uh, community, uh, service center on Race Street. Um, we're working out the, um, logistics of that and where they're gonna be doing their, um, clinical work and, uh, treatment. And we're gonna, um, it's gonna be another referral, um, not o- only for our opioid grants, but also our crisis intervention grants. And like Counselor, um, McGivern had mentioned, um, UMass is also on this grant and they are, um, gonna be our, um, evaluator. And they'll be tracking, uh, our performances and we're gonna be also developing an app for, um, case management um, so that we can, uh, keep track of our successes and what's working and what isn't working. And that's pretty much the summary of it. And like you said, it is a five-year grant, um, and it will continue each year at right around the three hundred twenty-nine thousand, um, mark. Um, as long as we're being consistent and following all the guidelines of the grant.
Counselor Tomlin had a question?
Yes, uh, thanks Sergeant Hart. Uh, I, I think this is great work that the, uh, the police department is doing in the city, especially a, a well-needed, uh, job that needs to be done with people with substance abuse and, uh, mental illness. Uh, my, my thought, you said it was a five-year grant? Um, and is there any city match?
No, there's no match.
Okay, and this is, um, you said there is a program, uh, there's a building on Race Street?
Yes, we, we Yeah, we have a, um, through our community development block grant, um, we have a community, uh, uh, service center where we have our, um, uh, opioid crisis team there as well as our, uh, crisis intervention team and our community policing, uh, office, um, there as well.
Okay, just a, a, and I, I, I heard about that, that office and I, I think if it's possible, maybe, I mean, I would be interested and maybe a few counselors would be interested in just sort of seeing how that, uh, program works down there, if that's a possibility.
Yeah, absolutely. We can try and arrange, uh, uh, ki- kinda like, uh, a visit.
Okay, when everything is, gets a little bit better, I, I would like to do that, uh, to see how that, uh, that building is run and, and how the office is, uh, is working there. But, uh, thank you so much for your work.
Thank you.
Counselor Leahy? You're still muted. There you go. Yep.
Anyone?
Yep, I can hear you.
Am I muted?
No, no, you're good.
Alright, uh, yeah, thank you. First of all, I wanna, uh, I certainly wanna take a second out to thank Sergeant Hart and, uh, all his due diligence uh, regarding these grants. He's coming up. Somebody's dog's barking.
That's my dog.
Thank you, Peter. And I certainly wanted to thank Peter's daughter for making, uh, makes me a beautiful, beautiful mask. Thank you very much, Peter. Certainly thank your daughter for me as well. Um, no, but I wanna thank, uh, Sergeant Hart and I also wanna thank, uh, Chief Ebo. Right now, um, they're dealing with a lot of different items because of this, uh, COVID-nineteen. And I don't even wanna go in detail what these guys are experiencing and these ladies are experiencing, but one of the things that's going to come down really heavy is substance abuse and also mental health issues. Uh, just because a lot of people are suffering and people are suffering within the six inches of their head. It's, it's, it's terrible and I think a lot more, uh, issues are gonna arise from this. And so I think this is a great time for this, uh, this grant to come in. Um, one of the issues that we have, not only Massachusetts, but nationwide, is there a lack of providers. There's a lack of, uh, psychiatrist and psychologist out there and people aren't getting the treatment they need. Um, so let me ask you this, uh, Officer Hart. What exactly will the grant be doing with the, the mental health side of it? Are they gonna be get a counselor or are they going to get psychiatrist?
Yeah, so they're gonna be, um, referred, uh, at, at any level, um, whether it be y- you know, prior to arrest, all the way through and into, we're gonna be doing in-reach into the jails um, for any type of, uh, serious mental illness. So they'll have, um, uh, access to direct counseling and, and any other services that, um, that the BHN clinicians will, will um, do an assessment, um, of that individual and and refer him to whatever services and, uh, programs are available.
Okay, now say, um, technically the city council votes on this tonight and it passes, uh, when do you see the funding coming in?
Um, well, it, the, um, I think the, uh, start date for this grant was April thirtieth of this year. So in a, next week, um, it's, it's officially opened up. However, we did have a, uh, another Zoom conference call with them and asked for an extension in our timeline in order to, uh, because obviously we can't start uh, interviewing and, and hiring clinicians without, you, you know, kind of, uh, being person to person or we, we just need time to, to follow through with our, our plan. So, um, we have a, uh, at least a three-month extension. Um, so in that time, we're gonna be, you know, hiring, uh, staff, developing our plan. Um, and probably, I would say, probably around September or so, we'll start, um, going into the implementation phase.
Okay, so let me ask you this then. Um, there's an order that, uh, Counselor Bartley and I filed that got approved and I think it's a very, um, important, um, uh, uh, order that we filed regarding um, kinda
Grants, yep.
Giving us a, a report after all the grant, have you had any grants that, uh, have been completed yet? Should we be receiving any, um, reports from you?
Um, yes, you, you did receive some traffic, um, grants that, uh, have been completed and I sent, uh, some summaries of those grants. Um, the other grants, um, that we have are not completed yet. Um, but I can give you a kinda like a summary of like case management stuff and, uh, clients we've seen with the, uh, with the, uh, opioid. We've been sending, um, uh, we do, um, monthly intake forms, uh, that are, that are required through HUD, um, because we have that community center. So, um, I, I can get you and the rest of the counselors some, some numbers on the amount of, uh, clients we've been, we've been seeing.
Mr. President? Uh, I appreciate that and, um, uh,
Counselor Leahy?
Mr. President?
Somebody else.
Who, who, Counselor Gray?
I just wanted to ask Sergeant Hart a quick question. Um, how, how actively involved will Sheriff Cochee be involved with you in this, this, this project here?
Um, he, he, his, his staff will be involved. We're, we're, we're intertwined with, with the sheriffs in so many different programs. Uh, thi- this is just another one of those programs that, that will be, uh, partnered with.
That's great, cause he's, he's a great valuable resource. He is.
Ca- Counselor Leahy, did you?
Yeah, no, Todd, thank you very much. So just wanna thank, um, Officer Hart again and, um, uh, all you guys and ladies. All the police officers be safe out there. Thank you.
Counselor Laborn Martinez? You're still on mute.
Can you hear me now?
Yep.
I just wanna say, uh, thank you, um, to Sergeant Hart. Um, these are very tough, um, grants to get. SAMSA, i- I, I remember back in the nineties when our HIV epidemic and our heroin, um, was high in the city. Um, we, Nueva Pransa got two of these type of grants and they're very national, um, nationally, they're very competitive nationally. So congratulations, cause this is a lot of work and I, I appreciate the work that's been put in this grant. To take care of the mental health issues. Thank you so much.
So if there's no further question, the motion was to pass the first reading. If anyone can come off you. Alright, so motion is to pass the first reading. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion would be to pass the second reading?
Second.
Clerk will call the roll. If you vote yes, you're voting for the grant.
Anderson?
Yes.
Anderson Burgos?
Yes.
Bartley?
Yes.
Graney?
Yes.
Hernandez?
Yes.
Leahy?
Yes.
LeBron Martinez?
Yes.
Lisi?
Yes.
McGee?
Yes.
McGivern?
Yes.
Murphy?
Yes.
Sullivan?
Yes.
Omen?
Yes.
Bacon?
Yes.
Unanimous vote.
With your, with your vote, you approve the grant, we go back in order to motions, orders and resolutions of the item ten. Um, there we go. Uh, this is from Counselor Murphy and Counselor Bartley, or at the city engineer examine the, uh, fenced-in properties at the northeast intersection of, uh, St. Vincent Street and Ingleside Route Five to determine if it might be possible to uh, improve the property in constructing some single, uh, family homes. This property is at the southwest corner of Dean School parking lot. Has a lot of fallen debris and damaged trees and has been, uh, been a place for people free, feel free to throw trash. Please issue a report back to the city council by the first meeting in August. So Counselor Murphy or Counselor Bartley? Counselor Murphy?
It's, yes.
So motion is to receive, adopt, send to
Get my hand up there, dude.
Okay, I was just reading the order. I saw you, so. But, yeah, to you, Counselor Murphy.
Okay, yeah, and first of all, I wanna thank Counselor Bartley, cause he actually brought this to my attention and I wanna, he actually, uh, spent some time cleaning some of the bottles and cans and trash that was thrown on the corner of St. Vincent and on Route Five going towards, uh, going north on the, uh, east side. Uh, and after we did that, I've kinda taken a few walks down there and, uh, you know, it, it looks to me like it's, that part of the lot is not used at all by Dean. I, I, I tried to verify what they could do there. It doesn't look like they could do much. I'm not sure it could ha- have homes, but there are two homes right across on St. Vincent, which I think if, if it is possible, would complement the other two and also make it a more attractive corner overall. If we can't do homes, we certainly need to do some kind of cleanup of the debris and the trees that are hanging out on, on Route Five, that are hanging off and falling into the fencing, uh, going up St. Vincent Avenue, uh, St. Vincent Street. And I think whatever we do, if we can do homes, I think it would make the sidewalk for the Dean students going up St. Vincent Street far safer because, uh, right now there are times that it's
because, uh, right now there are times that it's with the snow and with the debris, they have to walk in the road. And obviously, we're having, uh, students, cars driving with snow and everything else. So I think we have two potentials, potential benefits. If it is possible, obviously, we'd get some revenue for the sale of the land, hopefully some tax revenue, and we would make it a more attractive, uh, corner and a safer corner. So I'd like to make a motion, we adopt it and send to the city engineer.
Motion is to receive, oh wait, uh, sorry, Counselor Tomlin. Sorry, Counselor Tomlin.
Yeah, I, I wanna thank Counselor, uh, Murphy and Bartley. I, I go up by that area almost every day, uh, visiting my father and mom, uh, Tocquegee. Um, and it is an area I think that could utilize a couple of homes, uh, if that's possible. And, uh, there's several areas in the city I think where you have a lot of lots that are just collect debris and, and, uh, where there's a lot of brush. So anything that we can do, um, to enhance that area and make it safer, um, uh, going up towards, uh, Northampton Street Route Five would be, uh, I think a benefit to everybody. So, uh, a great job, guys.
So motion is to receive, adopt, send to the engineer with a reply back, uh, in August. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? It's unanimous. Eleven is from Counselor Murphy. Order at the city engineer, study the potential for installing roundabouts at intersections on Main Street, High Street, and Maple Street between Jackson Street and Dwight Street, which travel is currently controlled by traffic lights. If feasible, at any of these intersection studies have shown the potential of the following benefits: conserving gas, conserving electricity, and fewer traffic light fixtures, uh, reducing driver-based injuries and fatalities by almost seventy percent, reduces travel times as many, uh, cases as well. Engineer's study should be returned to a full city council by August as well. Counselor Murphy?
Yes, thank you, Mr. President. So again, this, a lot of this is being done in the Midwest, and the kinda results that they seem to be having. Uh, one of the things I, I would emphasize is the air pollution and the, and, and the, uh, reduction in, in, uh, uh, gas fumes on, on those intersections. All of those intersections that I put on the order are from the neighborhoods that have the highest asthma intensity in the city. Uh, so if we can improve air quality, uh, by moving traffic along, and obviously the benefits of, of, of fewer fatalities, less serious accidents, and, uh, and potentially also some financial improvements in terms of not having to make investments, uh, in terms of new, uh, intersections, uh, traffic light intersections, uh, uh, could be beneficial to the city. But I, I just, again, I'm not sure, and I'm certainly defer to the engineer in terms of what, what we can do there safely. Uh, but based on what I've read, and there's a number of communities that have done it, and, uh, it has worked out very well for them in all of those aspects: environmentally, economically, and in terms of, uh, safety, uh, and health issues. So I'm, I'm hoping that, uh, we can get a report back again in, in August. And, uh, if it, it is possible, hopefully we can start to, uh, uh, do it in some of the lower wards and, and start with those as, as test cases. And again, trying to improve the air quality where we have, I believe it's about twenty-three percent of the population in those wards have, uh, severe asthma situations. So, uh, so that's basically it.
Okay, so motion, uh, that's, uh, no, it's just Counselor Murphy. Okay. Motion is receive, adopt, send to the engineer for report back, uh, first meeting in August. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? That was unanimous as well. Uh, twelve is from Counselors Sullivan, McGee, and Tomlin. Uh, we talked about this in a prior meeting, so we put on the agenda that the city engineer review, uh, and assess, it should be assess, the safety of the parking deck, uh, at City Hall. So that'd be the old, uh, police department. Uh, is it safe to be on there, and what are the options of dealing with that, that parking deck? So motion would be to receive and send to the engineer, or report back to the city council. So receive and adopt.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? From thirteen is from Counselor Bacon, that the city council recommend a hiring and spending freeze, uh, be instituted due to, uh, economic disaster caused by the business closures in response to the, uh, pandemic. Counselor Bacon?
Thank you, Mr. President. I'd like to receive, adopt, and refer this to the mayor for his consideration, as the mayor in Springfield has done. Thank you.
Motion is to receive, adopt. We're sending it over to the mayor. Any discussion? I see none. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed?
No.
So there's one no, and the rest appears unanimous. Okay, so we'll go to the mayor. Fourteen is from Counselor Bacon, that the mayor present a plan to safely reopen businesses closed due to the virus as soon as possible. Counselor Bacon?
Um, thank you, Mr. President. I'd like to receive, adopt, and send to the mayor. I think, you know, tonight we're sending in a statement of intent to build a school when the majority of our businesses in the city are closed. And some of us are working every day and dealing with the coronavirus, but the implications of this economically are disastrous to a lot of people in our city. And we wanna be ready to go when the indicators are such. Um, this is something I follow closely. We are at the point where the numbers are starting to go down for people entering the hospital. But I want our city to be ready to go as soon as it's safe, that we don't start making a plan once the governor lifts the sanctions that we have right now. Thank you.
So motion was to receive and adopt to send to the mayor. Under discussion, anyone? No, so all those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed?
No.
No.
Two no's, that I heard, the rest were?
No.
Yes?
Three no's.
Three no's, okay. So with that, that's approved, so that would go to the mayor as well. Fifteen is from Counselor Bartley, Counselor Bacon, that the city council requests the mayor and the emergency management team to post all COVID-related communications to Channel fifteen and to post updates daily, at least until Governor Baker lifts the state of emergency. Counselor Bartley or Counselor Bacon? Uh, Counselor Bartley, you're still muted.
Meanwhile, can you read the order again? I'm sorry, what was that?
Yep, so it says from Counselor Bartley and Counselor Bacon, that the city council requests the mayor and the emergency management team to post all COVID-19-related communications to Channel fifteen and to post, uh, updates daily, at least until Governor Baker lifts the state of emergency. Counselor Bartley, you're back, I see.
Yeah, it's just, just a motion, receive and adopt. I think it's pretty straightforward.
Alright, so motion is to receive and adopt. Under discussion? See, none. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Oh, wait, Counselor Laborn Martinez, like, your hand up, or?
Haven't, haven't we been receiving updates? Has anybody been receiving updates from, um, the mayor's office?
We, we have been receiving updates, um, and that's been going to the counselors, and they have been posting it. I think this is saying to post it on Channel fifteen as well. That's what it's looking to do.
Yeah, it just says to post it on Channel fifteen, Gladys. I, I, I know we get the emails, uh, but the, the only thing I see on Channel fifteen usually is, uh, is Johan Vega, um, with a, in front of a microphone, so. Anyway, I thought that would be just helpful information, that's all.
Thank you.
The motion is to receive, adopt. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? That's unanimous. Sixteen is from Counselor Bartley, that the mayor and/or mayor legislative assistants provide an update to the city council at its April twenty-one meeting or at the next scheduled city council meeting on work completed by the, uh, command structure, which, uh, was sent to the city council via the mayor. Press release dated three twenty-five, twenty twenty, the press release is attached.
Yeah, uh, just, just, just a motion, receive and adopt, and, uh, briefly under discussion, Mr. President. I, 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 I think this is kinda similar to what, uh, agenda item number fourteen was, and probably what agenda item twenty-five is. And, and basically, it just encapsulizes what, what this, this group is supposed to be doing. It's supposed to be talking about the local economy, social services, and sheltering. I, I, I have, for one, received no information from this group with the, the, the planning pillars. I mean, I, I guess I get the updates from, with Stereohurst Director, but as far as this organization goes, um, they're supposed to talk about the local economy. I, I think that's all that agenda item fourteen was saying. I, I heard three no votes on that, but I, right, uh, then, then says, says local economy, social services, and sheltering. Um, I, I, I would like to at least carve out a little bit of time. I don't know when, when you intend, when the president intends to have another meeting, and I, I hope you'll, you'll advise us before we, uh, adjourn tonight. And, and, and because I, I wasn't advised until about a few days before the, the deadline to file orders that this meeting was upcoming. So, um, I'm, I'm hopeful that we'll get a little bit of a heads up, whether we're gonna meet May fifth or May, uh, whatever the next date might be, uh, after that. So, uh, May nineteenth, I suppose. If, if, if you, if you would, Mr. President, kinda gives a heads up if we're gonna go back to having regular meetings. But at those regular meetings, whether, whether you wanna work it out with Mr. Bloomberg to at least have, you know, carve out a couple, three minutes, or, or any member of this, uh, group, is Mr. Marrero. Um, I, I lost my notes here, but there's, there's three, there's three or four people. They're supposed to be on, there, there's a committee on this. So I, I, I think we as a city council and the viewers as a, on Channel fifteen, should at least hear what this incident command structure is, is doing, what is produced, and, and how it sees its impact on, again, the three pillars they proposed: local economy, social services, and sheltering. I, I'd like to hear what they're doing.
Okay, anyone further? So I can answer the last part, cuz you've asked me. I did say at the last meeting, we're gonna have our next regular scheduled meeting, which is today. Then I had the clerk send out the reminder that since it was a holiday, that being Monday, things had to be filed, uh, on the Thursday deadline and at the Friday deadline. Uh, so we will have our next regular scheduled meeting, uh, the first Tuesday in May, and then the third Tuesday. So with that, on sixteen, the motion was to receive, adopt, and send to the mayor and his legislative assistant. Yep. Oh, Counselor Leahy, sorry, Counselor.
I'd raise my, I'd raise the hand. Um, I, I'm just curious, um, I'm not sure if they have to follow, uh, what, are there any minutes to these meetings? If so, I'd like to see copies of the, of the meetings. Um, um, I'd just be interested in knowing what exactly is going on, because I, I, I think like all of us, we've had questions regarding, you know, who's on the committee? Are you getting paid? What, what this is all about? Are there any police officers, firefighters that make up this committee? Um, you know, we, we all get a lot of different questions, so I would just kinda like.
Would you like to amend sixteen to say also provide minutes of their meetings?
Thank you.
Counselor? Would you like to amend?
Write Counselor Bartley's order, but if, if he doesn't mind.
I'm just asking if that's what you'd like in there as well, Counselor Bartley.
Sure, but I, I, yeah, Jim, Jim, Jim's spot on. Uh, it's, uh, the, the, again, I mean, we, we all have this, we all have this memo. Um, and we all have the, the org chart, uh, the, the two org charts on here. And so as Jim noted, there's a, there's a one, two, three, four people on the local economy committee. Well, wha- wha- what is it they're doing? And I think that goes right back to agenda, agenda item fourteen, uh, which I didn't think was controversial. And then, then there's a social service committee, and there's three people on that. And then there's a sheltering committee, and there's one, two, three, four people on that. And it would be nice to know what, what their priorities are, what, what their, what their, uh, goal posts are and, and, and milestones, and have they, have they hit any of them? Um, and then, just, just, just get some, I mean, it's early days, Mr. President. So I me- I mean, I, I mean, I'll certainly welcome a, a, an amendment to get meeting minutes. Um, but, but we, we should certainly get some feedback from them a- on, on a regular basis. And I'm gonna leave that in your capable hands, whether you wanna do that at the, at the main meeting, or if you wanna wait, uh, until a subsequent meeting. But we, we should probably hear from them as soon as possible.
Yes.
So, within your request is to add that they also provide any minutes of meetings within that group. So on that amendment, all those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? So this is now back to receive and adopt and send to the mayor, and I will ask them to, I know the mayor was on tonight, uh, with, uh, Mike Bloomberg. I thought, uh, Mike was gonna stay on to give an update, but maybe he had a run. So what we'll do is request for the next meeting that they address this, Counselor.
Great, thank you.
Uh, Counselor Lisi?
Thank you. Um, a couple things. As far as I understand, um, these three groups are meeting via Zoom. And so, uh, there should be Zoom recordings of, uh, their meetings, and I think that, um, those would serve as meeting minutes. And if possible, uh, and appropriate, uh, we should definitely have access to them, or even possibly to be broadcast on, um, Channel fifteen as well. Uh, I'm not saying there, there's a must, but, um, I, I think it's something to consider. Um, because I do, again, believe that there's Zoom meetings that are being recorded. Um, and then I just wanna speak to, um, you know, my no vote on item number fourteen is simply because the way this order is written, it says that we're going to plan to open, re, uh, reopen businesses as soon as possible. And, um, that makes it sound like as soon as possible is now, opposed to creating a plan. Um, I mean, the, the wording is just off for me, and it, and I don't wanna be, um, putting the cart before the horse. I wanna make sure that we have a plan, of course, to, you know, secure the, uh, the, the finances of the city. And in fact, I, I filed an order that's coming up later to, um, get updates from the mayor on just that. But, um, I, I definitely feel that the information that I'm getting, um, from the, the state and um, state officials and health officials in Massachusetts is saying that we are not ready to reopen right now. And that is not something that I'm going to be pushing forward on. Thank you.
Anything further? I see a hand from Counselor Bacon, and then Counselor McGivern.
Thank you, Mr. President. Since we're going back to agenda item fourteen, the language that I wrote in the order is very clear, that I'm looking for a plan to safely reopen the businesses as soon as possible. What has been stated daily from the people that are at the federal level looking at this is that each state and communities within the state is different, one from the other. And I want us to be ready to go. People are suffering day to day with their businesses shut down. And we need to have a plan. The order simply calls for a plan. It's not rushing anything, and it is stressing safety. It's what I work with every day. So it's not a flip order, it's not rushing anything. But we need to get our businesses back online when it's safe, and we need to have a plan as to how we're going to do it. Thank you.
Counselor McGivern?
Thank you, Mr. President. Um, and I, I agreed with the, uh, what Counselor Bacon just said, because I, a plan is something we need to have in place. My vote was not to reopen on ourself, by ourselves, or to plan to reopen without the go-ahead from the state. I've been on, on sync with what Governor Baker has been doing. I think he's pretty much, you know, nailed, you know, what's going on and what it would take to reopen Massachusetts. And I agree with that. And Counselor Bacon, uh, your job is a very difficult one. And I thank you for what you do as an essential service provider, and I just, uh, kudos to you for everything and everybody you work with in the, uh, in the home. Um, on the, uh, the subject here, I, I agree with Counselor Bartley's request to add the, uh, the three categories that he's, he's, uh, asked for in this, uh, in this order. But I do wanna say that what Kate, and I, I hope I can pronounce her name, Chrysler, is, uh, providing to us is on behalf of the emergency management team has been incredibly helpful, both the, uh, the information she provides in her daily report, the links that she provides us. And some of those links are directly to the emergency management team, team itself. It's just incredible amount of information on a daily basis. I think, I think that team's doing a wonderful job. I've, I've spoken with both of our, uh, our chiefs, Chief Febo and Chief Jeff Popowski, and their, their jobs are very difficult at this time. And Jeff says that, you know, under these circumstances, there's no way a chief of police or chief of the fire department could be the emergency manager. Man, and I think the, uh, the fact that Mike Bloomberg is taking it on temporarily, and that we have Jeff Trask, who does it as a living, is part of this team. I think we got the right people in the correct place. But I agree with Counselor Bart- Bartley's order, there's some information that we do have to start talking about, about the economy, about business, about social and stuff. And, and therefore I will vote for this order, and, uh, just keep going forward. And, uh, again, Linda, thank you for what you do, but let's all be safe, and let's all keep informed.
Counselor Lisi?
No, that was the, uh, question that I just made. Thank you.
Oh, okay. Alright, so with that, uh, with the amendment, all those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed?
Uh, Mr. President, I think, I think we can bundle, uh, seventeen and eighteen together, just, uh, uh, suspend the rules, put, take them together, send, uh, uh, suspend the rules, put, take them together, send, uh, receive and adopt, send them to the, uh, send them, uh, send a, uh, copy to, uh, public safety and, uh, send it to public safety and a copy to, uh, to the DPW and the city engineer.
All right. So motion is suspend rules, take 17, 18 as a package. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? 17 is DPW, so Counselor Bartley, DPW fixed the curb in front of 14 and 18 Harrison Ave. Uh, 18 is DPW and engineer, uh, advise city council about installation of more, uh, catch basins, uh, steep hills such as West Glen Street. So motion is to, uh, receive, adopt, send to public, really, Counselor, do you want to receive, adopt, send to DPW and engineer with a copy to public safety?
Yeah, that's, that's fine.
Okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? 19 is from Counselor Bartley that the city auditor, treasurer, tax collector, mayor, legislative aide provide financial updates on the public relative to the tax collection. Please advise on how the city will support payroll needs, uh, due to the COVID-19 crisis.
Yeah, this, this is similar to what I filed for, um, 16, except this is more of a financial thing, Mr. President.
Do you want to send this to finance?
Well, I, I, I do. I, I, I want, I want to make a motion to, um, to, uh, uh, I, I want to make a motion to, to receive and adopt it, uh, but I, 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 I want to send, I want to send the finance, a copy to finance, similar to what we did with the prior order. Cause I, I, again, I, I think we just need to hear from them, uh, uh, on some kind of a regular basis until we get through this as to where we are.
Okay. So motion for 19 is to receive and adopt, but a copy to finance.
Correct, sir.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? 20 is also from Counselor Bartley. At the city council, approve an, an updated inter municipal agreement between the city of Hoyok with Amherst, Chickaby, East Hampton, North Hampton, Springfield, South Hadley, West Springfield, the Pioneer Valley, uh, planning commission.
Yes, Mr. President. This is, uh, this one, we're going to, uh, refer to finance. And if I could just get a second on that, I'll just briefly.
Second.
Thank you. Uh, yeah, this, this is, um, and to just through, through the presence of the finance chair, uh, as, as I read through this, uh, show, I, I, I didn't, I, I was asked to file this under my name through OPED. And, and I believe we had a hearing in DGR on this a few years ago. And, and now, now they're coming back for a re-up and there is a financial component to it, uh, for, for the city of Hoyok. So I, I, I don't know if we, I, I, I want it to go, I want it to be discussed in a finance committee meeting. I, I don't want this to shuffle. I think the intention might've been to shuffle it through city council tonight, but a- as I read through that pretty dense document prior to this meeting, uh, I, it didn't make sense. So what I'll do is, uh, what, what I think we should do is, is have the admin assistants send the, send the draft MOU to all the members of the, uh, whoever wants it, obviously, but all these members of the finance committee. And, and then we can have a discussion, um, in finance on it. Cause there is a financial component.
So motion is to send to finance. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? 21 is from Counselor Bartley. The mayor, legislative assistant, uh, OPED director in the role of deputy manager and municipal emergency operations. Uh, please explain to the city council, the jurisdiction of the city of Hoyok over the soldiers home and any state owned building within the city limits. For example, what role does the mayor have in the chain of command at the soldiers home? Uh, what role does the building commissioner, board of health, director, police department, fire department have at the soldiers home? Uh, how much regular contact, uh, uh, does the veterans department have with the soldiers home? Please reply with this communication from each of the above named departments uh, to the city council by the end of May, please.
Yeah, you know, I, I'm gonna, I'm gonna say, uh, yeah, that, that, that's a, that's a little aggressive. So I, I'm, I'm just gonna, we'll, we'll leave it as it is, but I, I'm gonna, uh, I like to make a motion, receive and refer to public safety. And I think when, when we come out of this, we, we can have a, a really good discussion, uh, about the soldiers home in, 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 in that setting. And I, I look forward to that.
The motion is to send to public safety?
And, and, and copy, and copy all the other, you know.
Will they, will they copy to all names?
Your four said names in there, please. Thank you.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? 22 is from Counselor Hernandez. Order that the city engineer review the traffic situation on Connor Ave and Pleasant Street at the Dwight Street and Appleton intersections on the street residential parking in certain areas is making it nearly impossible for public safety trucks or other large vehicles maneuver through those roads. Reconation should be made, uh, to mitigate the problem. So motion would be to receive, adopt, send to the city engineer with a copy to public safety?
I believe public safety is the best committee to send it to.
Yes.
Are you under discussion, Counselor?
Yes. Um, I have been in communication with a lot of the residents from these areas. And what has most recently come, um, to light is that, um, and I think it has been taking place for many years now, is that there's a difficulty because of the, of the narrow street. It's a two-way street and also is, is in a, like an S shape, just like Clinton Street. They're basically like an S shapes. Um, DPW trucks and I don't know if it has been any occasion when the fire department hasn't been able to go through. But I know that recently a DPW truck was not able to get through and had to wait until cars came out to move, um, their vehicles in order for them to pass. Um, it's also causing a lot of congestion as bigger trucks, when they're trying to get through, like a Poland Springs truck, um, for delivery, they had to back and reverse out to Dwight Street, causing a backup. Um, and I mean, it's not safe. Um, O'Connor, when they're trying to, um, come out of O'Connor Street, the residents there. In the past, there used to be like a, um, a big mirror, I guess, that you can see the vehicles that were coming, but that was removed and replaced with no parking signs. But the problem is that the no parking signs, cars are still parking there and it's not being enforced. So there's various issues here and, um, a lot of the vehicles that turn from Pleasant Street, making a left onto Dwight Street, that light, um, doesn't support like a, a left signal to guide these motorists to turn safely without the other car, um, yielding to them. So it's just like, um, very, um, hazardous there for all the residents and they have raised this concern. I have images that I have attached to display and to, um, so there's more of a sense of, uh, when we send it over to, um, to the committee for discussion. And that's all that I have.
Okay. So we'll receive it, send it to public safety with a copy to the city engineer to get back to us when it's taken up in committee. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? 23 is from Counselor Lacy that the mayor come before the finance or ordinance committee discuss, uh, plans for budgeting for fiscal year 21, given that city hall is largely shut down and many residents will be facing financial hardships. Uh, that will limit our property tax revenues in the next year or more. How can we identify essential services, consolidate functions, repurpose personnel and so on, in order to create a cost-saving measure for the city?
Uh, receive, adopt and refer to the mayor.
Motion is to receive, adopt, refer to mayor, copy to finance?
Uh, sure. Thank you.
With a copy to finance?
Uh, you know, you know what, um, can I send it to both finance and receive and adopt and send it to the mayor?
You can receive, adopt and send a copy to finance. Or if you want, you can just send the finance with a copy to the mayor.
To the mayor, yes.
I'll do that. Okay. So motion is to send a finance, send a copy to the mayor to bring him into discuss that.
Yes.
All right. So under discussion or?
Yeah, um, briefly. It's in the same vein as some of the other, uh, orders that were filed previously. Uh, we're coming up to, uh, our own fiscal year 21, uh, budgeting season and I, I'm expecting that we will have, uh, budget hearings uh, in the same way we have had in the past to get, um, department updates and also or, uh, where the mayor sees the budget going in the next fiscal year. But we are in this unique situation, um, where the city, um, because our residents are facing, uh, financial hardships will also be strapped in some ways. And so I think we should get, um, in advance of the budget hearing, some sort of broad, um, you know, comprehensive look at how like federal, state and local funding are going to work with one another in the next year, um, and what sort of impact we're anticipating. And then what, in broad strokes at this point in time, um, you know, in broad strokes, how the city will be, uh, anticipating it will be able to deal with that in the next budget.
Counselor Sullivan? There's, you're still muted, Counselor Sullivan.
You got it.
There you go.
So a- as an amendment to this or in addition to this, uh, you know, besides the, uh, cost cutting that might need to go on, the cost savings that have already, uh, happened, uh, through this incident, uh, for example, the price of fuel going down, uh, the amount of vehicles that haven't been traveling and haven't been used, interest rates going down, energy savings that have gone on, uh, in various buildings throughout the city and stuff. There, there's a lot of, um, things that have gone on also that are impacting the budget and we should know what those are also and what's going on in, in, in those departments.
Sure. I, I welcome that as an amendment. You understand, um, both sides of the, uh, fiscal equation.
All right. So, um, right before and so on, in order to create a drastic cost imager, uh, repurpose personnel, comma, and Mike, how do you want it to read?
Uh, a- and also what, um, uh,
Other cost saving items?
Savings and, and.
What, what cost savings has been realized at this point?
Yes. Right. And what, what, what other steps and measures, there's some other negotiations that should be going on. For example, uh, I know we have a contract with the, uh, Durham Bus Company, but there, there should be some negotiations going on there since they haven't had to spend a dime on fuel for months now, um, as far as, uh, turning some money back over to the city.
All right. So with the amendment is to add on what other cost savings and or measures can be uh, or have gone on and so on, in order to create a, uh, savings measures. That's the amendment. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? So now it's to receive, send a copy to the mayor and send it to finance. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? That's unanimous. So 24 is from Counselor Lacy. That the city council hold a hearing to explore the preparation, uh, for the Upper County 2020, um, election in September and November, including the feasibility of an all vote by mail election due to COVID-19. And that's the representatives from the secretary of state office, the Hoyok registrar voters, the city clerk and, uh, relevant state and city departments voting now, these organizations and members uh, of the public invite to, uh, testify if need, if I have remote, if need be.
Thank you. Uh, receive and send to the public service committee with a copy to, uh, the city clerk and the, uh, registrar voters, uh, as well as the administrative assistant, so that we can get in touch with some of these state departments.
All right. So motion is to receive, send to public service with a copy to all mentioned.
Mr. President?
And to Representative Vega as well.
Thank you.
Anyone else? I see a hand up, Counselor Sullivan. I see your hand up.
Forgot to take it down.
Okay. Counselor Bacon?
Thank you, Mr. President. Um, I would just like to weigh in, in that I think it's very important that people are able to vote in person and that we set up safe way for people to vote in the way that we have set up a safe way for people to go to food stores, drug stores and other essential places to get the things they need. Voting is an essential right in our country and I think we should make it a safe thing to do for people to do in person in the privacy of the ballot.
Mr. President?
Uh, Counselor Granny?
Yes, uh, Mr. President, I'd like to, uh, mention that voting by mail, although it may not, it may enhance voter fraud. People have the opportunity to vote at the regular polls and at early voting locations practicing social distancing. They can also obtain absentee ballots. I don't think this is a good idea. I think, and I agree with Counselor Bacon, that as many people as possible should get to the polls and exercise their, their rights as American citizens. And I don't believe voting by mail is, is a good idea because it may, it may enhance voter fraud. Thank you.
All right. So and we'll get a report from the, the state. Uh, I do believe something came in as an email. And I can send that off to people as to the state rules as to what they're going to do. But this is just going to public service. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Unanimous? Uh, Counselor Granny said no, Counselor Bacon said no. So two said no. That's still goes to the public service. 25 is from Counselor Lacy. That the city council invited Mike, uh, Bloomberg as the emergency management director to give an update on the city council COVID-19 response, uh, including but not limited to the steps the city has taken to secure resident safety, uh, measurable outcomes that have resulted from our emergency response and update on what the various, uh, working groups are presenting and doing and temporary, long-term staffing changes that have taken place. Some, uh, thoughts on how it will affect the budget? Uh, I would say take that up with, uh, mine on 28. If you don't mind, would be suspended.
I'll make a motion to, yeah, I'll probably combine the two of them.
Yeah, combine. Cause I, I just said, uh, the city council receiving an update from the mayor's office on the status of emergency operation. So just combine the two. So suspend rules, take 25 and 28 together. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Then it would be to receive. Uh, and we'll send it to Mike and we'll have it for the very next meeting, which would be the May, uh, meeting.
Yeah, I think it, it may make sense. Sorry. Thank you. Under discussion, um, uh, you know, Mike reached out to me before this meeting saying that, um, it may make sense to have like a half hour carved out before the city council meeting begins. Um, that way we can get the update. It can be broadcast. It doesn't create a lot of work for, um, you know, Hoyok media and Ryan in terms of like getting the Zoom going and, um, being able to broadcast that update, um, to everyone. And uh, you know, I, I was originally thinking just the half hour before the city council meetings, but, uh, it may be something that we could do weekly uh, at 6:30 or, or at six o'clock, something like that. Um, I, I do think that the, the update is as you've heard from many counselors filing similar orders this evening, um, something that is, um, essential for us as counselors to get a grasp of, but also, um, I mean, the information is being shared by counselors, uh, widely. Um, and I think there is a huge appetite in the city amongst our residents to have access to the information. Um, we have the ability in terms of technology to, to broadcast it far and wide. So I don't see any reason why we, um, should hold back in any way.
All right. So both should be receive, adopt, send it to the mayor's office and we'll.
Todd?
Yeah, Councilor Lee, sorry.
Yeah, I raised the hand. Um, I, I, I think it's a good order. I think it's a very good order. And I, I just, I just wonder if we should do it on a different night. I mean, we're basically, um, pretty much all quarantined here in their homes. Um, I, I don't, I don't think we should have to rush, uh, this important meeting. And if we do it weekly, that's fine, but maybe do it on a Monday night or a Wednesday night, uh, some other night besides our city council night. Because as you know, uh, these meetings, our city council meetings tend to go long. Uh, but I, I do think it's a, it's a good time and
Yeah.
And we can find a lot of information. That's just my thought.
Yeah, I, I, fine.
Counselor Bacon, you have a hand up?
Oh, no, that was last time. Thank you.
Oh, okay. All right. So do you want me to reach out to Mike tomorrow to come up with a time and we can send it to everyone? That's like Monday nights. I'm, I know it's an example. Monday nights are suggested a half hour before Tuesday, whatever, or before the meeting on Tuesday, whatever you think. And I'll get back to everyone through Ryan?
Yeah.
Sounds good.
Sounds good.
Okay. All right. So on 25 and 28, motion is to receive, adopt, and we'll send, and I'll talk with Mike tomorrow. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Uh, 26 from Counselor Lacy that in an effort to enhance food access and security for our residents during these uncertain times and that we expedite a backyard chicken ordinance as well as review of the permitting process for community gardens to ensure that is, uh, easy access to use for such sites.
I'm receiving, sent to ordinance.
I'd like to add myself to that.
So adding Counselor Anderson Burgos?
Myself, Gladys.
Adding Counselor Glass LeBorne Martinez?
Mr. President, and I had added myself through an email that I wanted to be.
Mister President, and I had added myself through an email, that I wanted to be part of it, please.
Adding Counselor Hernandez. Anyone else? Alright, so this is to ordinance?
Yeah.
All those in favor? Uh, Counsel Grani, I hear Counsel Grani.
Uh, Mister President, we uh, we discussed this issue numerous times in the city council when I was a member prior to this issue, and I understand that there's a pandemic going on, but the supermarkets are not having any, any problem, uh, local supermarkets aren't having any problem with food products or anything like this. I think that uh, you know, when we, we dealt with this numerous, on numerous occasions over the years in the city council, and the city council voted it against it, against uh, passing such an ordinance, and I am receiving calls already from some residents who are, who are opposed to this. So I, I don't understand, you know, uh, uh, the, the, the issue uh, related to the pandemic. I don't, I don't understand why we're, why we're, why we're gonna take this up. And I think that uh, if this is going to be sent to ordinance, I think we should have a roll call vote on this issue.
Alright, next is Counsel Bacon.
Thank you, Mister President. I just wanna make sure that the counselors are aware that we already do allow the keeping of chickens in Holyoke in the entire residential agriculture zone. The keeping of chickens is allowed, and there are numerous sites if people don't like to get eggs in the food stores where they can access them at the local areas where people are already keeping them and putting the eggs out for nurture. But I just wanna make sure everybody is aware that it is allowed in the city currently. Thank you.
Counselor Hernandez?
Yes, I just wanted to add that, I mean, I support this because, you know, I mean, we all have been following the news and have seen what's going on in the poultry packing plants, you know, and it's just a way of, of allowing residents that perhaps do not, that we don't own, like myself, I don't own all these acres that allows me to have hens in my backyard, and by doing something like this, it's gonna um, give access to people like me and many other people to be able to have fresh eggs in their yard, free of hormones, and I mean, it's a, it's a source of protein. So we have to think about that. Um, people that can't afford it, um, will be able to, to comply, I mean, East Hampton, all of our neighbor um, communities in towns, they have it in place, and it's working fine with them, and I think that Holyoke, that we can, we can get this done as well, and I know, um, Counselor Grini, that in the past, it wasn't passed um, through the city council and it wasn't approved, but this is a new discussion, and it merits that we discuss it and see what's the outcome. I do have a lot of constituents that are in favor of it and have called me and support. Thank you.
Counsel Leacy?
Uh, thank you. I, I have to say, I've been getting a lot of phone calls about this issue, um, in part because of what's happening at the poultry packing facilities, but also because I think, um, you know, folks in, we have multiple um, schools open throughout the week. Um, the city has been doing a tremendous job providing food access to many families that have um, few, food security issues. Um, as Counsel Hernandez just mentioned, um, it is a huge source of protein. Um, the eggs alone are a huge source of protein, um, and I think we wanna ensure that, um, especially as um, supply chains start breaking down, dealing with all sorts of products already, that um, our city is prepared to, um, you know, is prepared to create food security for um, vulnerable uh, folks that ha- that are food insecure, and I think that it is um, something that we need to get a handle on. Um, and additionally, I think that it's, you know, it's going to happen whether or not we legislate it. And so the sooner we can legislate it and create rules and regulations and permitting and get information out to people about how to do it safely and responsibly, that's how we're going to be able to manage uh, the issue in the best way possible. So, so I would like to see us move forward on this rather quickly. A public hearing would be in order because it would be a change to the zoning ordinance, and I'll be working with uh, Ryan on setting up the uh, public hearing, and we would, we would likely have to have some um, something set up where, where folks that want to speak on the matter email us in advance to get the, the Zoom, Zoom code. Um, it's definitely going to be uh, a new challenge for us to figure out how to ensure that there's um, you know, public access to our meeting in which there will be public comment required. Um, but I'm, I'm very much interested in uh, taking on that challenge and moving forward. Thank you.
Counsel Sullivan?
Yeah, I just couldn't, I just couldn't resist the opportunity, uh, since we've all been cooped up for so long, uh, to mention that this conversation is really for the birds, and we really ought to stop squawking about it and send it to committee.
Thank you.
Counsel Bartley?
Uh, wow, that's, that's a tough act to follow right there, Mike, uh, for, for sure, but I'll, I'll do my best, uh. Uh, yeah, just, just, just two points, uh, we, we, we got, I think most of us received and hopefully we all read a couple emails from constituents, so it would be my hope that they would be uh, invited specifically, somebody from the Pioneer Valley Planning Commission. Uh, I think one of the cons- uh, uh, Ward Five constituent, if I remember, uh, she, she sent something, uh, I thought very informative, and so the PBPC has some expertise in this matter, and, and I think it'd be uh, vital for the ordinance committee to hear from them. I think, I, I think that we al- also received a letter from, from a Ward Three constituent uh, today, um, uh, so uh, countering that, we're ta- talking about s- some of the environmental uh, concerns, and so I, 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 the counselors saying, you know, that it would benefit them personally, and, and that, that's great. Uh, but i- i- we, we've gotta keep an open mind about this because uh, our, our ones are zoned a particular way uh, for, for, for a reason, and uh, that's why we have, as, as uh, Linda pointed out, we, we do have this in, in RA uh, as, as well, and so I, I, I just think we need to, you know, not go in with a preconceived notion about this, not go in to say that as if, as if, you know, we know this is gonna happen. Well, we, we don't know that, what's gonna happen. That, that's, that's unreasonable. I, I, I think we just have to uh, I, I'll go into this meeting with an open mind on it. I, I certainly have constituents that are vehemently opposed to it. At the same time, even in Ward Three, there are constituents that support it. And so I, I, I wanna hear uh, uh, both arguments, but, but to say that it's, you know, to say that we need to expedite this in the middle of a, of an epidemic, uh, I, 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 I don't know. I, for one, would rather not have this done by a Zoom meeting. I'd rather have it in the confines of Room Eleven like we always did. Once we can get by this, that would be my preference. I mean, I'll leave it to the ordinance chair, obviously, that's, that's a chair's purview, but I would just, I would just be very cautious about it, try to, try to be very thoughtful in doing this, 'cause the, the calls are coming in already, and uh, I just think we need to take it, you know, take the re- reasonable steps to, to ensure that we protect all citizens and not just do something to personally benefit us or a- a- and not to go in with a preconceived notion that, that we're sure this is that the, the supply chains are gonna break down. I mean, we, we don't know that, uh, let, let's be cautious. Thank you.
Counsel Leahy?
Uh, yeah, thank you. I saw this on our agenda, and I was kinda confused because there, as, as mentioned previously, it's uh, it's already uh, an ordinance. Um, and you can go online and look at it, and uh, right now it just, it's at least a hundred feet from any abutting lot line of residential use, at least a hundred feet from any, a year-round service uh, water body is the restrictions for the, the coop. And um, right now, I don't think there's even a permit required uh, to, to do this. So uh, setting up a new ordinance, um, I just don't, I guess I just don't understand that part. Um, any person can go online and look up backyard chickens, and you can learn all about the chickens you want. Uh, and I would encourage uh, the people who are supporting this to go do so. Thank you.
Counsel Tomlin?
Yes, thank you, uh, Mister President, and I, I wanna commend the uh, the counselors that put this forward, but I, I think we shouldn't rush into anything, uh. This is something that during these times, this pandemic is something that we really gotta think about. I mean, um, we talked about the, we had the bird flu a while ago, uh, I'm getting emails. Uh, I'm getting calls from constituents that are really concerned about this issue. Um, as Counsel Bacon stated, there are areas in the city where you can get eggs, uh, in residential areas. Um, this is something that I would like to see a, a very good dialogue, uh, public comment on from uh, citizens, you know, in all areas of the city, but uh, uh, the word that concerned me in this order too was expedite. I mean, during these times, what's going on now, it really concerned me that we shouldn't rush into anything, so whatever anybody's views are on this, I, I think uh, we should have an open discussion. I think nobody should make any uh, conceived uh, notions that this is gonna happen, or that we're totally gonna run out of uh, meats or chickens at any time soon, uh, but it's something that uh, I wanna hear from the public and from my constituents in an open meeting where um, we could have a, a good dialogue and, and not to rush this uh, this order into any, any type of um, ordinance uh, at this time. Thank you.
Counsel Hernandez, you still have your hand up, or? You, you're on mute, Counselor.
Yes, I do. I just wanted to add, um, as it was mentioned that, um, I express a personal interest in this. I also want to add that I am a counselor at under eighty percent of the area median income, and I represent myself and not only as a personal interest, but everybody else that's in the same situation as me that would like to have hens, laying hens in their backyard to help them supplement and um, make ends meet. So I just wanted to clarify that it's not just a personal interest, but I am representing my community. Thank you.
Counsel Leacy?
Yeah, um, the only thing I wanted to say was that um, the current ordinance that we have on the books allows for chickens in the R one A zone only, uh, or any property that has five acres or more, so it's very limited um, who has access to, um, you know, raising uh, hens and, and chickens in their backyard for, um, so I do think it needs to be expanded. Thank you.
Alright, so this is to send to ordinance? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All those opposed?
No.
No.
I heard two no's? I think I heard two no's, so it'd be to ordinance?
Roll call.
One person has asked for a roll call? You need three members to ask for a roll call. With that, you're on to twenty-seven and.
President, can we take item twenty-seven and twenty-nine as a package, please?
Motion to suspend rules, take up twenty-seven and twenty-nine as a package. All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Twenty-seven is that we appropriate seven thousand, seven hundred and twenty-seven dollars and seventy-three cents from sergeants and patrolmen to injured on duty. That'd be the police. Uh, twenty-nine is to appropriate two thousand, one hundred and twenty-one dollars and thirty-two cents from firefighter to injured on duty. This is that standard we take from the account and give it to injured on duty to pay for the, the salary, and that way it's just a tracking. Under discussion, Counsel McGivern?
Make a motion to pass the first reading, the uh, first item, police officer.
Second. Second.
Motion is to receive, adopt, pass the first reading under discussion?
Sorry, uh, there's two police officers and one sergeant for the Police Department transfer. There's one firefighter for the Fire Department transfer. This would give better accounting as to when one of our public safety um, employees are offline, still getting paid their salary, it's their actual salary dollars just being transferred into an injured-on-duty line item for accounting purposes.
Alright. Seeing no hands, motion is to pass the first reading?
Second.
Second.
All those in favor, all those opposed?
Motion to pass the second reading.
Motion is pass the second reading. Clerk will call the roll. If you vote yes, you're voting for both orders to do injured on duty. Remember to unmute yourselves.
Anderson Burgos?
Yes.
Bartley?
Yes.
Grani?
Yes.
Hernandez?
Yes.
Leahy?
Yes.
LeBron Martinez?
Yes.
Leacy?
Yes.
McGee?
Yes.
Yes.
Murphy?
Yes.
Sullivan?
Yes.
Coleman?
Yes.
Bacon?
Yes.
Unanimous vote.
With your vote, you approve, he asked me to approve those two items. We did do thirty already with uh, Sergeant Hart. We did the late file with Counsel Grani. There is no other late file. Uh, with that, before we have a motion to adjourn, I do a trivia question, uh, 'cause we're at the end of the night. Are we ready for this? Have you been following?
Ready.
How many rooms was Counselor Anderson Burgos in tonight?
Three.
He was not in my kitchen.
No, wait, did I, wait, say that again?
How, uh, trivia, how many rooms was Counselor Anderson Burgos in tonight?
At least three.
Oh, yeah, hold on, I, I want other trivia.
I wanna know how Counsel Leahy walks through walls.
Uh, you'd like to know, wouldn't you?
He's disappearing.
Why doesn't the elephant have its own zoom?
Good one!
Oh, look at that.
With that, I hope everyone, please be safe. Thank you for being here tonight. Um, if you need anything, do not hesitate to call, and I will get the update for um, the meetings with uh, Mike Bloomberg, um, whatever date we can get. Stay safe, motion to adjourn?
Thanks.
Second.
Don't move.
Alright. And have a great night.
Everybody.